...a meeting to order. Please take the roll.
Robert Childs?
Here.
Ms. Collins is absent. Dr. DePoeck is absent. Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Lau?
Here.
Mr. Michael?
Here.
Mr. Schotterson?
Here.
Ms. Chair?
Here.
Mr. Spitzer?
Here.
You stand for your divisions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you sit down, I'd like to propose a moment of silence for three women who retired from the district: Mary Kirk, Rosie Carlson, and Marion Jones, who passed away in the past two weeks since our last meeting, and a student, William Donner. Entertaining motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining under the Taylor Law, ETF, the SCA, and ASCA, matters leading to the point of particular individual or individuals employing a history of particular individual or individuals or preparations and proposed acquisitions sale or lease of real property and publicity would substantially affect the value thereof.
What's the real estate that we're going to discuss?
I'm sorry, you didn't...
What is the real estate that we're going to discuss?
The stadium.
That's not the acquisition. Oh, I understand it's a sale, but it's not going to affect the price.
It's not going to affect the value?
No.
But we really need legal advice on it.
I'm going first.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Will be adjourned to executive session and returning as close as soon as possible. Thank you. Please go red. We call the public session to order, and we're going to begin with the first... We have no resolutions coming out of executive. I should preface everything with... And we're going to begin with the first opportunity for public participation. You have two minutes. We have two people signed up, and then after they've had their say, then anyone else who wants to address the board at that time can. Our board clerk will let you know when you're approaching the two minutes. We concentrate on issues, not personnel issues nor student discipline. So specifics, that's not the venue for it. So, we're giving you your due. Chris Presser, is that correct pronunciation?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. My name is Chris Presser, and this is Stephanie Presser. I'm a lifelong resident of Kingston for over 45 years now. And we have an eighth grade son who attends Maple Ridge School, which is part of Mount Academy run by the Brutal. On January 15th, 2019, I emailed the athletic director of Kingston City Schools letting him know that my son wanted to try out for the modified baseball team. He said that my son is ineligible to participate on any of our teams. After further research, I found out this statement not to be accurate. I spoke with the executive director of Section 9 on February 19th, 2019, and he stated that the two schools could apply for a merger. Each school's board would have to approve it. Then it could be sent to the Section 9 Chairman of the Combiding Committee. He also even stated that the application is considered late for the waiver can be submitted with the merger application, and Section 9 can still consider it. The Mount Academy is an active member of the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. The merger is possible and has happened in the past. Gianox, who was a Mount Academy student, played Kingston City School soccer because of the merger between the two schools. Since Kingston City Schools is the host school, they have to initiate the waiver/merger application. I spoke with the athletic director from the Mount Academy on February 20th, 2019, and he said they were willing to agree to a merger with no problem at all. Again, he stated to me that Kingston has to initiate the waiver/merger paperwork. This should have happened over a month ago, and my first email request was sent to the Kingston Athletic Director on 1/15/2019. I asked if this issue be remedied and if the waiver/merger paperwork be initiated forthwith. In the end, this board and these schools...
I give them my two minutes.
Absolutely.
In the end, this board and these schools should be only about one thing, and that is the children and their needs. We teach our kids to never give up and to fight for what you believe in. Unfortunately, in this scenario, adults seem to have given up and not even tried. We should all practice what we preach, and we hope that all of you agree with this. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Presser.
Can I finish my two minutes?
Sure.
So, both me and Chris own property in Kingston and pay our taxes. And for our son not to be able to play ball with the children that he's been playing ball with since he's been five years old is unacceptable. And why? We pay our taxes. Kingston City School District buses him to Maple Ridge since he was in third grade. There's no... It's happened in the past. Maple Ridge, the Mount, does not have a baseball team. Our son is a baseball player.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Anybody else? Okay. Well, hearing no takers, I'll move to the approval of minutes for January 23rd. I entertain a motion.
Abstain.
Thank you. Any amendments or corrections to minutes of January 23rd? Okay. All those in favor are accepting minutes of January 23rd, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Anyone opposed? Abstentions. All right. We'll move along to the minutes of February 23rd.
No?
No, that's only January 23rd.
Okay. It's on the... I don't know. I'm reading it. Sorry. I stand corrected? I don't know. Yeah. So, we may have the minutes of February 23rd, since it is February 23rd. And I will turn the floor over to Dr. Padalino for the superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chair. Only one item on the superintendent's report tonight, and that is our report from BBL and CS Arch on Maha.
Good evening, everybody.
Ms. Parker's here too.
Here to give you a quick update on Maha. Lots have happened since we met a few weeks ago. The window installation is ongoing. The second floor was finished at the end of last week. The windows look incredible. They really make a difference. It's so much brighter up there. The windows are scheduled to be fully completed on the first floor beginning of March. The roofing installation at the elevator and the west fuel, that was completed yesterday. They started that on Tuesday. And that finished up. All that remains is the metal trim that goes around the roof. They're going to do that at the same time as the walkway cover in a few weeks. On the first floor, we have some metal wall framing that's ongoing. There's only a little bit left in the bathroom areas and one of the conference rooms. On the second floor, the entire floor is sheet rocked, taped. Most of it is primed in first coat of paint. Whole space is starting to take shape. Door frames are painted as well. Later next week, ceramic tile is going to be done in the bathrooms. Either later next week or early the following week, there's some floor leveling that needs to be done. Then they'll start to put some tile down on the floors and on the walls. In the pre-k bathrooms, those are completely finished. The doors were hung last week, as well as the mirrors, the grab bars, all the fixtures, tile. Everything's in place. Those doors are going to be shut, and Tom's going to take some guys in there and do some work that he has. The plumbing piping in the bathrooms on the second floor was completed yesterday. Now they're on the first floor doing the connections under the existing floor. Tying those all together, and the piping in there will be complete. Electrical devices are being installed on the walls, such as outlet covers, fire alarms. Some of the light switches are being installed as well. And then duct work is continuing. We're starting to tie everything together and wiring up some of the mechanical units so when it's time to turn everything on, everything should be working just fine. Here's some of the new windows on the second... You can see the difference between the second floor and the first floor. World of difference. This is on the west elevation.
Just to add, there's additional trim that goes on, so in the center margins, they won't look yellow. Don't match with the rest of the window.
And we got an interior shot as well. Here's one more of one of the conference rooms. This is another room that's been painted for the most part. These are the pre-k bathrooms. They were clean this week, so the floor protection is up, and those are being shut. The fixtures were also installed in the superintendent's bathrooms back there. As I said, painting is ongoing. They did paint the door frames. They're just covered up right now, so when they paint the rest of the wall, you won't be able to see them. And these are the doors that were installed in the pre-k area. On the first floor, we're taping. This is one of the classrooms for... Or one of the offices for the new pre-k principal's office. I'm sorry, I have this picture in twice. I apologize. Door frame taping. This is the IT room. The data racks were installed, and the wiring is being pulled down and fed into the unit. The rest of the unit is being put together. This is some duct work on the second floor conference room. And as I said, some electrical finishes have been installed. The masonry at the elevator was completed, and the roof is now done as well. And in the tax office on the first floor, all of the openings have been cut for the new windows. That's all I have. Is there any other questions?
Have you started checking about furniture yet?
I'm going to turn it over to Debbie.
Yes, actually, she and our career designer will be down for the March 13th walkthrough and facilities meeting. She is reviewing what you've sent, as well as other options.
Yes, and I've learned they do not fold.
Okay.
But maybe there's a new one that does fold.
We're investigating everything.
Thank you.
So, definitely on the mark, so it takes a lot more intent information.
Any questions? Ms. Jordan?
Everything looks great, and I always want enthusiasm for what you do. I just wondered if there are any unexpected problems that we run into.
There's been some additional patching that was needed, some that we didn't have in our drawings originally. So that was a little bit of an unforeseen condition that we didn't account for. But other than that, nothing major.
I'd like to think we're over the hump in the sense that we've uncovered just about everything we can at this point.
And just to reiterate, there was just a reference to it, and I know I referred to it last meeting, May... March 13th, rather, at 3:30, we're convening at Maha. And the tour will step off at 3:45. We have a very brief meeting that will adjourn by 3:45. So those of you on facilities, make sure you're there for the 15-minute meeting.
For all the board?
It's for the whole board and the, you know, facilities committee.
Yes.
Any other questions? Mr. Flaber, have you anything to add?
No. Everything's going along well.
I will add something on facilities. We did open the bids for Phase Two for Kingston High School today. Alan and his team are still putting everything... BBL's still putting everything together to know if we... But preliminarily, I will say, we did very well. And I think we're going to continue our pattern of being under budget. So that's... Because really, a lot of people here have a lot of good bids, so we're excited. But we'll have more of that as soon as Alan and BBL get all the details straightened out.
Yes.
Any questions? Once again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Back to the superintendent's.
I think that's the shortest superintendent's conference.
In a long time.
Okay. That brings us to consent agenda. Are there any resolutions, any trustee would like to remove from the consent agenda at this point?
Do you want to go on to the consent agenda?
Just the one about the science project?
Yes.
All of those resolutions are on the consent agenda.
All of which ones?
All of those.
The BREs. The BREs, well.
Which one?
DOE.
51.
Okay. Any others? Is there any other resolutions, any trustee would like to... Hearing none, I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda minus DOE 51.
Abstain.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor are accepting consent agenda minus DOE 51, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay? DOE 51. I'll entertain a motion.
Abstain.
Thank you. Discussion.
I have two discussion items. Number one, I think it's an important resolution. The public should know about it. We're approving participation in an initiative between the 103rd Legislative Assembly this week and the Benjamin Center, assuming new calls, to participate in the second year of the science initiative. Is that...
Yep.
So, and that's just for... Is that just for the middle schools?
We... It's actually... This is expanded. Last year, we passed a similar resolution for the middle schools. And I know Ms. Bondill and Dr. Alaveto worked on that with the Benjamin Center and creating the science labs for the middle schools. Now, Seven K Hill has arranged for every school district in Ulster County. Actually, it's received some money to do the same type of thing, looking at STEM labs in our elementary schools as well. So this is in addition to the money that we received last year for the same purpose. So we're going to have, you know, K through eight STEM labs in our school buildings, thanks to Seven K Hill and the Assembly.
So that'll be nine schools that will have this science lab?
Yep.
So I think that's really important, and I think it's good for the public to have an opportunity to know about it. The second item is how did this get into your consent agenda? Who put it there?
I did.
Well, I thought that... You know, I thought we agreed that items that go on the consent agenda should be there by Friday afternoon when the consent agenda is covered. It's covered.
I honestly forgot all about that. I got it late in the afternoon yesterday, and I honestly had shut down my computer already and remembered that I had forgotten to place it on the agenda.
We all got an email.
Well, I know we got an email, but the people who, you know, people who looked at the agenda before me, and the reason I wanted to pull it is because how else are people going to know about it in the district? Do they look at the agenda an hour before the meeting starts and see what's new? Or the day before?
I think in the event that the board clerk gets them late, we have the option of waiting another two weeks or moving ahead.
We can... You can... We can...
Well, then you took what was proper by pulling it.
Then we can just do that as new business.
We'll make sure they're putting it in new business in the future.
I apologize. I forgot, Jim. I'm sorry.
I mean, I've discussed this many times before.
Okay. We're going to move on. Any other discussion?
Just to add, just in addition to that... And we will, once we're up and running with our plans and getting ready to put them into the elementary schools, and we'll still have the presentation on, you know, what's going on in those labs.
The president's garbage in the industry.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. And all those in favor of DOE 51?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. And I prevail, applying Mr. Spicer to read the donation. He will show me the one. Thank you.
Is it this?
Yes.
Artificial board action? Recommended action, D23, accept a grant award for George Washington Elementary School, whereas the Kingston High School is the recipient of a generous grant award from the Community Foundation of the Hudson Valley in the amount of $713.75. And whereas Dr. Paul Padlin, the superintendent of the school, has reviewed the proposal and recommends the acceptance of this grant award, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the City School District of Kingston, New York, does hereby accept with grateful appreciation the award of $713,075 from the Community Foundation of the Hudson Valley, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education directs the treasurer to attend the 2019 budget in the amount of $713,075 and increase the revenues and appropriations as follows.
Technically, we've already voted on it. It was in the consent agenda, so you can just read the donor and...
Oh, okay. Oh, so the... Okay, I see. Okay. Accept grant award for George Washington Elementary School, whereas the Kingston City School District is the recipient of a generous grant award from the Target Field Trip Grant Program in the amount of $700,700. And I stopped?
And we are very...
And one more thing on the...
Yes.
It's just one other thing on the consent agenda. We... And Ms. Jenny, you pointed a new communications specialist to fill in for Kate, and she is here. And it's Ms. Karen Siri, who many of you know. Welcome.
Thanks.
Her name was her first guy.
I haven't break anything yet.
So we're glad to have... We're glad to have this Siri.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, we're moving along to the committee reports. And the only committee that's reporting out this particular meeting is facilities. Facilities met last Wednesday. We had an update on the move out of Sealy and into Maha of the materials from the administrative offices. And some filing we have to store for, I understand, 99 years.
Yes, a lot of different rules and regulations. How long do they have to store for?
Yes. Our bids that Dr. Padlin alluded to for Phase Two of KHS will be on the March 6th agenda, and we're happy to report that they have come in under budget. We have, in terms of the summer work, we're through many of the approvals. We did sign paperwork for the summer work, and there's a lot of work being done at Biller this summer in the auditorium. We get to see the new windows in April, but we got a... For Maha, but we got a... We'll be seeing them in March, because we'll have an advance tour. So that would be very nice. And we're taking a look at a few of the ads and ends from the... They're still finishing up from the field house, correct?
Correct.
Right. We've still two punch item lists from the field house. The academic towers are all closed out, and we're moving ahead with Maha on the summer work. Any questions? Okay. And you'll get to see Maha in person on the 13th. Okay? So that brings us to old business. Is there any old business any trustee would like to raise at this point?
We have...
Yes. Old business?
Friend of education, a...
We had a committee meeting, and we'll be sending out an email to let you know. We had a nominating committee.
Was our resolution last time that the committee would put?
Yeah.
What shall we have to discuss about the vacancy of OCSs?
The vacancy of OCSs? Yep. There's at-large vacancy?
Yes. Who's vacancy?
I don't know who's leaving. Not from our district.
No, we still have two seats.
We have two seats.
There's one at-large that is usually held on a new call, is it? Yeah. And then two that are standard for our district.
We have... Our seats are... Yeah.
But we still have to vote.
Yeah, they... Well...
But we can't nominate.
Yeah, we don't have any nomination.
You can nominate.
But there may be somebody from a different district.
Right. Any other old business? Okay. The only thing I'd like to mention, the talking conversation that had to be rescheduled will be held at Boys and Girls... It was inclement weather on the 12th of February in the evening, and so that was postponed until April the 3rd, I believe?
April 9th.
April 9th, I'm sorry. April 9th at the Boys and Girls Club, same time. And I hope same trustees or more will be able to come. So... And any old business? No? New business? New business? No? All right. Word announcements? Word announcements? Yes.
I attended the Capitol Conference last weekend, Sunday and Monday, and it didn't snow, so that was something, you know. It's... One of the things they talked about was they felt that the pace of legislation had sped up this year because of the Democratic majority in both houses, so that they expect a budget by April 1st. They also felt that the wrinkle of the $2.3 billion shortfall from the federal government may create some problems that they didn't anticipate. But they felt that there might be some opportunities for advocacy in education because the legislature was not necessarily following the governor on the shortfall. So, there is a $1 billion increase for education funding promised from the governor's proposal and they depend on. But they also talked a lot about the need for the change in the formulation. And that's a problem throughout the state for every district. And I don't know when that's going to happen. But in all of our advocacy meetings the next day, we talked about that as being important, that unless they change the formulation, we're constantly going to be having problems. So, the most optimistic thing for me was listening to Commissioner Ilya. I just find her to be very down-to-earth, very realistic, very approachable. One of the things that came up, and I mentioned this at the facilities meeting, is that there are many districts around the state who are having a lot of problems with their capital projects because they put in these proposals years ago. It's taken so long that when the proposal finally gets approved, the budgets have skyrocketed. And so I wanted to compliment all of the people that we depend on in terms of our architects and our engineers and our, you know, all of the people making our capital projects so successful. And the fact that Dr. Padalino advised us to go ahead and not worry about the state aid, because in the end, we're going to make that much better. It's taking like about 26 months for some people to just get a science lab approved. And the commissioner did address that, and she said one of the problems is that they don't pay enough for architects and engineers to work for the state department. And that's why they went to this third party. that's why they went to this third-party approval process. But there's still a big long chance of that.
So it hasn't, how many months has it eliminated on the average? Did they have to say?
They didn't really say, but it's not, she, she still said that they're understood. And so, one of the things that she talked about was she did say that she believes local control is very important, but in light of the things that are coming down the pipe, she does feel that if the numbers don't look good, the districts have to be able to explain why. So, you know, this whole thing about looking at the resources per child in every building and making sure that we're providing what we need to for those areas. She supports the Dream Act and the Children's Victims Act at the state level. She thinks it's very important that we take care of those kids and that we're a safe haven for them. So the other thing that they talked about was safety proposals and how it's very important, and we have had this discussion last year, that our officers are not in charge of discipline. She feels very, very strongly that school personnel have to be in charge of discipline, and that the people who are there from the community are there for different kinds of, of support. And the graduation rates, she said over the last 10 years is up 10%, but she's still concerned that there is still substantial achievement gaps in the suburbs. So she, you know, she's great to listen to, she's very supportive of everybody's efforts, and you get the feeling that she is approachable and realistic, but she wants us to do better, and we all want us to do better, so I don't think there's any conflict here. And then we went to see our reps, Amador and Kevin Cahill. Mr. Amador had a, somebody from his office speaking to us, and then Mr. Cahill was there with us for a long time. He wanted a photo op, we just, he is extremely supportive of education. He's never been one who hasn't stood with us, so he, you know, he was concerned about the elections and all of that coming together and was pleased to hear that we had worked something out, so. And he does want to visit the P-Tech site, so I, I advised him that he might want to see that. So we're hoping to set up, I, I told him that we'd set up a visit.
Yeah?
Okay.
Where's Steve's phone?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you for attending. Mr. Tennessee, you didn't attend the show?
He wasn't feeling it.
He wasn't feeling it.
Okay, that's fine. You did one over looking for a hat. Okay. Any other board announcements? Okay, then we've reached the second opportunity for public participation. The same rules, the same policy as the fixed voting on two minutes. Board clerk will notify you when you're getting close to the two minutes, and we discuss issues. So is there anyone who'd like to address the board at this point in time? Anybody?
So I just want to know, and I don't know if you can answer me back?
It's not a conversation, no.
Okay. Well, we would like to answer to our son's merger with the Mount.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, and I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion for adjournment, please move.